I now call the meeting of the City Council, January 23rd, 2012, to order. This is our first meeting for the new year, first regular meeting. For the clerk, please take the roll.
Um, you know, uh, uh, you're...
Present.
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 Present. I did hear from Councilman Donahue, he may or may not be here, he's rather ill, so he's gonna try and make it if he can. At this time, I'd like to ask Judge Coyer to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a...I'll entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting.
No move, second.
There's a motion and a second. Clerk, any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor Mochill?
Yes.
Um, Seidel?
Yes.
Um, Marrow?
Yes.
Um, Ray.
Yes.
Um, Ray.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. I would like Judge Coyer to come to the podium, please. We have a proclamation under Proclamations. Proclamation, on the occasion of the celebration of the 100th anniversary of the founding of the Laborers International Union of North America Local 271. Be it resolved that whereas in 1912, 15 brave immigrant workers who chose to fight for better working conditions and wages came together to form the Laborers Local Union 271 of the International Hard Carriers Building and Common Laborers Union of North America. The members of Local Union 271 were proud to stand among the men and women of this country who fought for economic and social justice for all, including the eight-hour workday, the 40-hour week, as well as safe working conditions. Local Union 271 is also proud of the education and training legacy it has fostered for future generations who call themselves laborers. Whereas the members of Local Union 271, past and present, take pride in the fact that their sweat, labor, and skill built many highways, extraordinary buildings, tunnels, bridges, and monumental structures in this great state in the city of Cranston. Local 271's amazing history is a testament to the progress and achievement of all who labor. They have erected more than monuments, they have raised a working person to an honored place in our society. By remembering their past, their proud past, we give hope to all working people that through hard work and diligence, they and their families will continue to be part of our American dream. Whereas today, Construction and Laborers Union Local 271 of the Laborers International If there being none, we'll start off with the public hearings. Union of North America continue their progress at the forefront of the construction industry, This section is limited to doctored matters. representing over 2,100 skilled members. Ash, that you come to the podium when you wish, state your name, address, and the item Local 271 is led by Michael Sabatoni and President Raymond Coyer, progressive labor leaders who have engaged in collaborative partnerships with the city of Cranston to enhance our infrastructure and build training and career pathways. that you want to speak on. I did have a sign-up sheet, so the first one who signed up is K. Joseph Shakovsky on We thank them for their efforts and look forward to working closely with these individuals to build our city for the future. 12-11-1. Congratulations to Local 271 Executive Board and membership on their 100th anniversary.
Good evening, Mr. President, and honorable members of the Cranston City Council.
Be it therefore...now therefore be it resolved that the Cranston City Council expresses its
For the record, Attorney K. Joseph Shakachi, representing the applicant and ordinance
sincerest congratulations to the Laborers International Union of North America Local
number 12111, believe this is scheduled tonight for a full hearing before the council.
271 on its 100th anniversary.
Mr. President, members of the council, on behalf of the Executive Board of Local
Respectfully request a 60-day continuance. My client unexpectedly had to be called out of state for business, and my expert along
Union 271, our thousands of past and present members in the Laborers International Union
with my brother counsel's expert both testifying and warrant this evening.
of North America, I proudly accept that and thank you.
If the council pleases, 60 days or whatever date appropriate, I'll be happy to accept.
Thank you for coming. You have your copy. We'll take that under consideration when it comes up on the agenda.
Thank you.
60 days, so you're looking at the...
March sometime?
April meeting?
March or April, whatever the president and the council decide is fine.
The March 26th meeting, okay. We'll take that under advisement.
Thank you.
Next one is Diana Gordon.
I'm waiting, not now.
I'm sorry?
No, not yet.
Oh.
Good evening, council members. I'm here to speak about the school custodians, utilizing custodians pick up for trash collections at playgrounds. I want to preference what I'm about to say. I believe this was brought forward by Councilman Stychos, who has always been a good friend of Parkson Recreation, and has been a longtime member of the advisory board, and I know his thinking on this was for the benefit of Parkson Recreation. This is about Bain Middle School, Garden City School, and Parkview Middle School, of the custodians collecting the trash at the playgrounds at those areas. And again, I know Councilman Stychos had all good intentions, but of the 12 schools that the school department custodians pick up our trash, all that's at those schools is a playground. It's a tremendous help to us that the custodian steps out, picks up the trash, and it takes some work away from us. When we're talking about Bain Middle School, Parkview, and Garden City, I don't know how many of you can picture these locations. When you walk out of Garden City School, you have to walk across a baseball field to get to the playground, which there are two trash barrels at that baseball field that we have to pick up anyway. At Bain Middle School, when the custodian steps out of that school, it's at least 150 yards to the playground to pick up one barrel, where we have to come during the course of every day to empty seven other trash barrels around the Bain track. And Parkview, you cross the street from Parkview to Parkview Boulevard from the school, walk across a baseball field, a soccer field, to get to the playground, where we have to go during the course of the day to pick up eight to 10 barrels of trash every day. So while your intentions are very good, and we truly do appreciate it, I don't see the need of the custodians doing all that walking to get one trash barrel and return that garbage to the school, where at those three locations, we have to go there anyway. I leave that, you know, for your thought and when it comes up on the agenda, but I just wanted to give you my view. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of the people that have signed up. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on an agenda item?
Good evening, Council President, council members. My name is Timothy Dodd, 215 Broadway, Providence. On the item that Mr. Shakashi brought up, I represent a bunch of neighbors who will be objecting to any continuance to any date certain. I just want to preserve my right to address the council when this item comes up on the agenda. There's certain legal arguments, which we'll probably be making perhaps myself, perhaps Mr. Shakashi, and perhaps your own solicitor, so I just want to preserve my right to be able to address you all when this matter does come up and object to the request for any continuance.
Don't misunderstand this, but this is not the zoning board.
No, I know.
So this is your opportunity to speak.
Okay. I don't think that I'll take the time now. I don't believe that it is appropriate to continue the agenda item regarding the zone change for Reservoir Avenue to any other date. When this matter was before the ordinance committee, the petition for zone change was defeated on a 5-0 vote. Typically, under Rule 25 of the Cranston City Council rules, a negative vote would be reported to the full council, and no further action would be taken unless five members of the entire council petition for a further hearing. I don't think that would be appropriate here. Excuse me. General Law 45-24-51 was briefly discussed at the conclusion of the ordinance hearing, and I think your...I'm not predicting, but I think your solicitor is of the opinion that the matter must go before the full council, even though it was voted 5-0 down before ordinance. If you look at General Law 45-24-51, it appears that all of the bases set forth in that statute were satisfied before ordinance. There was a proposal submitted, it was referred to the planning commission, the planning commission made a recommendation, there was a hearing before the town council, a vote was taken in a timely manner, and the vote was recorded. The real question, and I've looked at this issue quite extensively today, is what is the meaning of the city council? 45-24-51 contemplates that the matter should be heard before the city council. Now, pursuant to your own council rules, you set up certain subcommittees, or certain committees, I should say. Amongst them is Safety Services, Finance, and Ordnance Committee. So when a matter is heard before the ordinance committee, is that a hearing before the council? You have designated a subset of yourselves to hear certain matters, so that you don't have to hear everything en masse with all nine of you present. I believe, and there's really no case law to direct here, that that subcommittee is a hearing before the council. If it isn't, it's absolutely superfluous to have done anything before ordinance in terms of a hearing. Both parties brought in experts, witnesses testified, and apparently that was all for naught if you take the position that the applicant gets a second bite at the apple before the full council. It's interesting to note that the notice that went out through the advertisement in the Cranston Herald, as well as the notice to the abutting property owners, set forth the hearing that was had on January 3rd, the hearing that was had on the 12th, and the hearing that's scheduled tonight. Nowhere in the notice is there any reference to 45-24-51. So if that is the mechanism that's supposed to get the applicant this second bite at the apple, nothing in the notice contemplates a full hearing under General Law 45-24-51. The question is, is that ordinance committee in the quorum that was present sufficient to satisfy the general law? I suggest that it was. You had five voting members. Additionally, Council President Lupino was present, asked some questions, didn't participate in the vote, but was present. Councilwoman Santa Maria was present, didn't vote, didn't participate. Arguably, you had seven of the nine council members listening to the entire presentation. You got more than a quorum. So in the absence of something more specific, I would suggest that the general law has been satisfied without some further hearing in March, and that consistent with the general law and consistent with your own Rule 25, this matter has been sufficiently heard and requires no more hearing and no more testimony. And I'm sure you're gonna hear something different, but to provide for another hearing, I think will create certainly an issue which will be reviewed on appeal in some court of an appropriate forum. Thank you.
Anyone else on an agenda item? Seeing no one, I'll close that section of the meeting. Resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow passage for this traffic signal at Atwood Avenue.
I'd like to make a motion to put this up for media consideration, Council President.
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion? If there being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor Mochill?
Yes.
Um, Seidel?
Yes.
Um, Marrow?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you to my colleagues, thank you, Council President.
Would you wish to explain at this point in time?
Yes, this is in regards to the traffic signal that's gonna be going up across from Regerry Supermarket. The DOT, through various meetings throughout the last couple of years, had given us a date of spring 2012, which is just around the corner. We...one of the representatives recently got a letter saying they were moving it to This resolution basically said that's unacceptable, that we've had major accidents, that we've had one fatality. There's no reason why it should be delayed. We have put out $30,000 of our money, the city's money, to do our end of reconfiguring Walnut Grove and Atwood, making it come into a V to make it more applicable, or more amenable, I should say, to the new traffic light. So this resolution basically says, keep your word and make the starting date in spring of 2012. Copies this will be going to...I don't know if we have to put that in there, but I'd like copies to go to Senator Lianzi, Representative Yuchi, and Representative Lima, who all have its kind of confluence, the district's confluence in that area, so.
I see no reason why we shouldn't send it to the entire Cranston delegation.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Any further...
You need that in form of a motion, or?
No, that's fine. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? If there being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor Mochill?
Yes.
Um, Seidel?
Yes.
Um, Marrow?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. We have Report of Committees, Public Works Committee. Councilman Navarro, for your report.
Public Works Committee Chair, we have resolution requesting that the Cranston Department utilize custodians for trash collection. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll second for discussion purposes.
There's a motion and a second for discussion? Councilman Stychos.
Could I have some questions for Mr. Libertori through the chair?
Sure, I'll allow that, sure.
What I got from what you said was basically that there were a lot of barrels at Parkview and Bain, and that that would be, and they're distant from the school.
Yes, sir.
And so that would be a real chore to pick up all the barrels?
A chore for him, the distance to walk when we're gonna be there anyway during the course of the day at these particular locations.
And you'll be there anyway because?
Because we have a daily run of trash pickup at Bain Track, Bain Playground as it stands right now, Parkview Track Playground. The only one right now would be Garden City School, because there's no baseball, so we pulled those barrels in. So if you want to do that seasonally, that would be a help to us.
Just the Garden City?
Just the Garden City.
Wouldn't...I guess the intention of the resolution was that you wouldn't have to drive to those locations?
But we do anyway, we have to. That would be too much to ask a school custodian to empty anywhere from seven to 10 trash barrels every single day.
Okay.
Especially in clement weather.
Would that be true at year-round at Garden City? Are there seven to 10 there, or?
Garden City during baseball season, say, late March into middle September, we're there anyway. From October till beginning of March, we don't go there.
But you're there anyway because?
The baseball field is operational, and we pick up trash there on a daily basis.
But could we have the custodian pick up the trash at the Garden City field and save you a trip?
If they don't mind emptying three barrels versus one that they do at the location, we'd appreciate it.
Well, I guess my...what I'm wondering is if it makes sense to amend this resolution and take out Bain and Parkview because of the arguments that you've made, but leave in Garden City.
Garden City, the department would be very grateful.
Okay. All right, I'd like to make an amendment then to...
Councilman Stychos, before you make your amendment, I just want...I'd like to make one comment to Mr. Libertori, maybe something that he may have forgotten, or just to add to the situation. Isn't Garden City the site of the summertime playground portion?
Yes.
And isn't there a tremendous amount of trash that you pick up at that location during the summer months?
Absolutely.
So it's not just the three barrels, it would be probably an additional three or four barrels because of the trash from the daytime?
We have our playground program at Garden City on the opposite side of the school, away from the ball field. That's where we try to maintain our trash to that location, rather than have it all over the entire complex. So we may add two more barrels because of the playground program on the other side of the school, which would have nothing to do with the baseball or the playground.
Okay, Councilman Stychos, if you want to...
Maybe other people have questions for Mr. Libertori before I make my amendment.
Councilman Navarro, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to just point out to the council as well as Mr. Libertori, with resolutions, I mean, they're non-binding, and this is just something that a councilman put together, Councilman Stychos, with good initiative, like you mentioned. And, you know, per our...I think it's on our...in our ordinance or charter, the administration is supposed to, within the month, get back to us a report regarding the feasibility of implementing the resolution that passes, if it passes. So I mean, we could vote the resolution down if...I mean, I'm hearing Councilman Stychos wanting to make an amendment to it, but I know that part of the process here is, even on these resolutions, it's not an ordinance, it's not something that has to be done, the administration has to get back to us regarding the feasibilities of the resolutions as they pass when it comes to operations of the city. So I just wanted to just bring that out there. So I mean, I don't have a problem voting for this, so that the administration can then report back to us regarding why and why not this resolution would be implemented.
I don't have an issue if you pass the resolution as it is right now, because being that we go there every day, if the school department or the custodians fail to do their job under this resolution, we're gonna be picking up the trash anyway.
Right.
So nobody's gonna be screaming and yelling if the trash is overflowing.
I just wanted to bring it out there.
I have no problem passing it as it is.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Councilman?
I'd like to amend, actually gonna offer two amendments, but I'll keep them separate just for...so it makes it easier to understand. On line 31, to take out the words Parkview Middle School, Bain Middle School, and, then insert on line 32 the word "the" before "city," and on line 33, change "facilities" to "facility" singular, and take out the words next to those three schools. So the end result would be, be it further resolved that the Cranston City Council requests the Cranston School Department direct its custodians at Garden City Elementary School to collect trash at the city athletic facility.
There's an amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the amendment? If there being none, clerk, please take the roll on the amendment.
Councilor Mochill?
Yes.
Um, Seidel?
Yes.
Um, Marrow?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Yes. And on the resolution as amended, Councilman Stychos, you had another comment?
Yeah, second amendment, just...this should have been done in committee, but at the end of the resolution, having it state, be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the superintendent and school committee with the request that they respond to the resolution by April 1st.
There's an amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there being none, take the role on the amendment.
Yes.
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 Yes. And on the resolution as amended twice, any further discussion? If there being none, take the roll.
Councilor Mochill?
Yes.
Um, Seidel?
Yes.
Um, Marrow?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
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 Yes.
Yes. Tax interest waiver approvals as recommended by the city treasurer. Many recommended approval. I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? If there being none, take the roll.
Councilor Mochill?
Yes.
Um, Seidel?
Yes.
Um, Marrow?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Yes. And on the resolution as amended, Councilman Stychos, you had another comment?
Yeah, second amendment, just...this should have been done in committee, but at the end of the resolution, having it state, be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the superintendent and school committee with the request that they respond to the resolution by April 1st.
There's an amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there being none, take the role on the amendment.
Councilor Mochill?
Yes.
Yes.
Marrow?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And on the resolution as amended twice, any further discussion? If there being none, take the roll.
Councilor Mochill?
Yes.
Um, Seidel?
Yes.
Um, Marrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Finance Committee, Vice President Pelletier, Chair, calling you for your report.
Thank you, Council President. Committee met and handled a couple of resolutions. First one was a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements.
And the finding of the committee was positive?
Many recommended approval.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If there being none, please take the roll.
Councilor Mochill?
Yes.
Um, Seidel?
Yes.
Um, Marrow?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Tax interest waiver approvals as recommended by the city treasurer. Many recommended approval. I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? If there being none, take the roll.
Councilor Mochill?
Yes.
Um, Seidel?
Yes.
Um, Marrow?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Tax interest waivers denials as recommended by the city treasurer. I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? If there being none, take the roll.
Councilor Mochill?
Yes.
Um, Seidel?
Yes.
Um, Marrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, Ray?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Resolution authorizing and endorsing the application for enterprise zone redesignation on the Reliant Enterprise Zone Program. Committee met and recommended approval.
Before I ask for the motion, the administration was asked to provide some information, particularly by Councilman Stychos. Do we have that information?
I believe that information was forwarded to Councilman Stychos. If you have any further questions, Larry Devoni, Director of Economic Development, is in the seating area if you'd like to speak with him.
Councilman Stychos, did the information you received satisfy your questions?
Well, I did receive the information, thank you. And I was, also made a mistake at the last council meeting where I said that the report which Mr. Devoni prepared had been kind of dropped in our laps and I had received that also by email prior to the meeting. I hadn't obviously read it, but I was in error, so I do apologize for that. I won't be voting for the resolution although I have the information, just because I don't...
Well, hold your, if you have the information and you've digested the information, as long as the information has been passed on to you. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Now I want the discussion, Councilman Stychos.
I won't be voting for this just because I don't see any proof that the thousands of dollars in state tax money that are being given to these businesses actually induced them to create jobs. It's documented that jobs were created in these areas and that money was paid out, but I think this is a, is not a really good economic strategy in that it isn't targeted and it doesn't necessarily create jobs as much as it takes very scarce public resources and give them to businesses, some or some of which may have going, may have been going to make those changes, make those employment decisions anyway. Just looking at the list, you see a doctor's office getting, getting a tax break, a law office, and I think those businesses, supermarket, we're probably going to do that anyway and we shouldn't be using money to give to them when we have such needs in our schools and our libraries and elsewhere in our community.
Councilman Favickio.
Thank you, Council President. As the sponsor of this legislation, I disagree obviously with my colleague, Councilman Stychos, on this. This is a job creation bill, that's what it is. It costs nothing to the city of Cranston to do this. It provides tax incentives to companies to hire people and expand staff in distressed areas. It targets distressed areas of the city and other parts of the state as well. And I also disagree that small businesses such as possibly Coastal Medical is one of them on the list. I would venture to say that not every doctor's office, law office, accountant's office are all doing extremely well in this economy. I think everyone's been hit hard. Anyone in small business knows how difficult it's been. They've all suffered decreases in income, they've laid off people, obviously our unemployment rate is so high. So I think that they do need an incentive because they have to rehire or retrain people. I think that this is the kind of bill that we need. It's only one tool that the Economic Development Office has in the city. They work with companies such as Coastal, Technico, CVS. Some of them, some of them are fairly large, some of them are small. I don't think we should discriminate against a larger or medium-sized company because they're hiring in our city and especially in areas that are in distress such as the, there's parts of Wellington Avenue which are, you know, in need of new business. So to say that this is not, does not provide a good outlet for job creation, I think is wrong and the state is gonna, is going to spend this money and create tax incentives. And I don't think tax incentives are a bad thing. I think that to suggest that the businesses are gonna hire anyway, with our unemployment rate being what it is today, I don't think that's the case. The EDC, you know, has done a great amount of work with companies such as Chapel View and Garden City, for example, which announced expansion plans in a bad economy. I don't think, they're not in the enterprise zone, they're bucking the trend, but I think that this is such a simple, easy way to promote some job growth in the city that I think we need to do this.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. To the Chair, to, to the President, to the sponsor, if I may, ask my question?
Say that again?
May I ask the sponsor a question?
Sure.
Mike, who's gonna be the authority on making sure that these people hire people? As you know, we, in the city, we have a tax incentive program and I think Marsha, Marsha, if I'm correct, is in charge of making sure that I think they have to double their employment within a certain period of time to keep the tax incentive. I just want to make sure if we're handing out tax incentives, that there's meaningful job creation out of it. Now, who's gonna monitor it on this? It's gonna be, if it's a state thing, who's gonna be monitoring it? Is it gonna be us?
Well, I think that the state obviously has control because it's their money and their bill. We're just taking advantage of the program they make available to the city. I think Ms. Lo Presti could answer, maybe answer your question, how much input they have and control they have, but I, you know, we have to comply with whatever the state regs require. If you'd like, I'm sure that Mr. Devoni or Ms. Lo Presti could answer that question.
I know what Marsha does because she has copies of them. I mean, they give her reports, I think, on a quarterly basis. Will, basically my question is, how will we know these people are hiring people?
I'm not sure whether they're required to tell us, but I think I would defer to Mr. Devoni. I think, I think what he's suggesting is that they do report, so we do get reports on who is hired and perhaps you should ask the question to Mr. Devoni.
Okay, if I may?
Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Devoni, allow Mr. Devoni to answer that question. Just so you understand, Mr. Devoni, what Mr. Santa Maria's getting at is, who does the monitoring? We have, you've mentioned the tax incentive program, you have to monitor how many jobs are created to get a tax incentive. In this case, this is a state program, who's monitoring the number of jobs and how the money's being spent?
This has, this has to go through the State Enterprise Zone Council. They get, they do a good, a letter of good standing of the company and then it goes to the state's Division of Taxation and they approve the credit.
And just to further, to delve into what Mr. Santa Maria's getting at, and we've had this happen before, that's for the approval process, what about the ongoing monitoring?
The ongoing monitoring still goes through the State Enterprise Zone Council. Every company that hires will have to show proof of hiring every year that they're hiring employees to the State Enterprise Zone Council. I'm sorry.
Why don't you stand there just a second, just in case there's anyone else. Councilman, you're set, Councilman?
I, that's sufficient, so we get a yearly report then rather than, I think we get quarterly in the city, right? Or quarterly or biannual?
Right, this is, this is a yearly program. They only get the credit at the end of the tax year. The company has to show that they're solvent and that they're profitable.
Okay, now, can I just follow up with one quick? So if they're not, if they don't, if they don't hire more people, what happens?
If they don't get the tax credit.
Okay. You're sure of that?
Positive.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President. I just have to say that I disagree immensely with my colleague from Ward 1. I think we're in difficult, severe economic times and I think it's up to government and us, we as council persons, to do everything possible to retain business here in Cranston and create business here in Cranston. And in difficult times, I think this is something that the city of Cranston needs. During the Great Depression, Franklin Delano Roosevelt created one program after another. Some worked, some didn't work, some worked against each other, but he tried something. So I think we need to try something, I think we need to pass this resolution.
Councilman Navarro?
Thank you. And thank you, thank you for the report as well. Councilman Stychos did, did ask for a report regarding the enterprise zone and the tax credits regarding hiring. And I am gonna be supporting this, I mean, it's something that has to be done in order to, to be able to invite businesses or have businesses look at these depressed areas in order to decide to move there. But I do have a question to the Economic Development Department, you know, because going through this report, it doesn't cost us anything, but out of all these pages from 2008 to 2011, there's only a handful of Cranston businesses that are, that are actually being, that are actually benefiting from being in an enterprise zone. So my question would be if, it doesn't cost us anything, I mean, I know we have depressed areas in the city of Cranston and my colleague just mentioned Wellington, maybe Cranston, whatever areas that are designated in Cranston, but there's only a handful out of, out of 2008 to 2011. I mean, is there some reason for that where all the, all the tax credits and other businesses are all in other areas of the state?
That's up to the company to choose if they apply for the program. A mailing has gone out, we've met with most of the companies to explain what the program is and then it's up to the company to actually put an application in through our office and then to the state. Just because you sit in an enterprise zone doesn't mean you're automatically in the program. You have to apply to the program.
So basically the reason is not, is that, so would you say that there's, there would probably be more businesses that would, that would benefit from this program, but they don't know about it and they're in enterprise zone?
No, I'm not gonna say they don't know about it because we've met with most of the businesses in the enterprise zone and back two and a half years ago, a mailing went out to all the companies in the enterprise zone explaining the program. The company chooses to either take, to get into the program or not get into the program. Some, some companies know they're not hiring, so they have, they've chosen not to get into the program.
So that, that would be the reason only like six or seven companies out of all, out of all these are taking advan, are...
That's exactly right.
Because they choose so.
And plus, there are companies that have chosen to go into the program, that aren't showing a profit, that aren't hiring people, so you're not gonna see them on that list, they didn't get a tax credit.
Well, that was my question, I am gonna support it, I mean, anything that can help bring, entice companies here, you know, I just wanted to make a note because, I mean, we're approving this and we wanna bring businesses and colleagues saying, create more jobs in this, but I mean, only six companies out of this whole list are taking advantage of it in Cranston. I mean, I see Providence, I see all other cities and towns and Cranston only has like six. So I mean, I don't know how, you know, fruitful it's actually being, but, you know, I'm gonna prove it so that, you know, we can at least try to entice business, get more business involved in programs like this where it doesn't cost us anything.
Any other discussion? My only other comment would be that the monitoring on one side might signify a scrutiny or a lot of red tape on the other side. That may, that, the monitoring may be the deciding factor for some of these businesses. If they have staff that can submit the paperwork, go through the scrutiny, then they'd be more apt to have a second thought about going through the program. There being no more discussion, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Council President, we have one final resolution. Resolution authorizing a presentation before the Finance Committee of the City Council by the Berkshire Group and other similarly situated companies to assist in developing cost-saving strategies for the 2012, 2013 budget process. It was amended in committee and they recommended approval.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
There's a motion and a second, on discussion, Councilman Favickio?
Thank you, Council President. This was also my resolution.
I know you were out of town when the...
I was out of town and I thank you for bringing it to the full council. All I'm seeking to do here is have this company, which has a tremendous amount of experience around the country in reducing costs for government and also in universities and different types of organizations, but, so I thought that with the knowledge that they have of many cities around the country, including, you know, the northeast, the east, and also even, I believe Oakland, California, even some cities out west, I think the, I think it would be very helpful in our strategy in dealing with the budget process. They may open our eyes to some ideas that we've never heard about. So it's strictly a fact-finding mission, I'm just looking for ways to help us because we're gonna face a difficult budget season very soon and I, I think that these people could help and any other companies similarly situated. There's no cost whatsoever to have him come in and speak, so I think it might be helpful to us.
Councilman Arquette?
Thank you, Council President. Just one question for the sponsor through the Chair. That's okay. Yep. Councilman Favickio, the only, the only thing that really initiates a spark with me is line 27 where it says, "at no cost to the municipality." And I'd just like you to elaborate on that, are they donating their time or how is, how can that be done? Economics 101, I learned there's no such thing as a free lunch, so I just, could you explain?
Sure.
No cost to the community?
If I may, Council President, the, obviously the presentation will cost us nothing. The way that these type of companies are compensated is if, if a department within a city or the city administration wish to hire them, they get paid a 10% commission on any savings that they generate, only on savings.
They're getting paid on savings they generate?
They get a commission on savings only, so it's strictly incentive-based type of compensation and they're willing to donate their time even just to make a presentation.
Well, that's a good answer, you answered my question, thank you.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. To the sponsor, where'd you hear about these people, Mike? I see they're from New Jersey.
Well, he has a Brown University connection.
I'm not sure that New Jersey's the bastion of economic goodwill.
Well, it's actually, it's a good place because they have a tremendous union influence and they've had to deal with contracts that we've dealt with, so actually it's pretty good. And their, their connection with Rhode Island is that the founder is a Brown University grad, he's doing business with Brown and Providence College right now. He's been saving money for both of those universities here in Rhode Island, so he has some connections here and...
To follow up, just trying to keep it in Rhode Island.
And I didn't know him before, I just, a friend of mine introduced me to him and I went to, met with him a few times just to see what they're all about.
Just a follow-up, are there any comparable Rhode Island-based organizations that could do this, that would probably know our situation better?
I opened it up to any, you know, I don't know of any, but I'm sure there are some other companies around and I certainly welcome anyone else to, to speak.
Thank you.
Council Vice President Pelletier?
Thank you, Council President. Also, to the Chair, to the sponsor. Councilman, I didn't have the opportunity because again, you'd mentioned that you weren't here when the resolution was in the Finance Committee, but how soon can we expect to see some sort of presentation from?
I spoke with Mr. Horowitz and the next Finance Committee meeting would be fine. If I just give him a date, he'll make a point to be here. He does have the other clients in Rhode Island, so he could, he could be here on the next date. I think it's early February.
Through the Council President, to the clerk, clerk, can you put this on the Finance agenda if it passes?
If it passes, if it passes. Any further discussion, Councilman Navarro?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions to the sponsor, a couple of things that concern me. You mentioned, you know, when we talk about government finances and budgeting, we've been, I've been on the council for six years and we've looked at the budget and we've know what, what's involved with it and all the cost savings and cuts that we've had to make and, but I look on this, this Berkshire Group that I know you wanna just bring in, maybe they can bring some light to something that we don't know already regarding our budget, but they don't have not one municipality on there. They're all universities, they have, they list a couple universities, I don't see not one municipality. It's all, you know, it's Brown University, Howard University, the City University of New York, New Jersey Transit, Rutgers University, then companies. And the, the main, they're specializing in increasing a company's productivity and bottom line by creating a system of customized purchasing controls. I mean, we all know if this was a company, the...
I mean, we all know if this was a company, the city, it'd be running a whole lot different. That's for sure. So I don't know exactly what this group would bring to the table. I don't have a problem having us, giving us a presentation. You know, I think this is more of an administrative matter. I mean, we have a mayor, a finance department, auditors. I mean, there are so many people that look at this budget inside and out, and, I mean, we can pass this and have them give us a presentation, but ultimately, they're going to have to sit down with the mayor, and the mayor has to produce or find out if these... I mean, I don't know how we, you know, if this is going to help us in our budget, especially in our upcoming budget, that we don't know already as far as budgeting's concerned, but I'm going to, it's a resolution, so I'm going to vote for it, but those are my concerns of the logistics of, I mean, the mayor's the one that's going to be putting forth a budget. And I'm sure the mayor's looking at cost savings in ways, and I'm sure he has the last couple of years, as much as the council has, and, you know, we've done everything that we could, and unless, and again, I don't see a municipality on there or something they can, but it's a whole different ballgame when you're talking municipalities. This is not a company. If it was, like I said, we probably wouldn't need to, probably be cutting a lot of jobs and doing every else that we have to do, but, you know, we deal with bargaining contracts, and so there's a lot involved. But if we want to do a presentation, if we feel that it's something that might be worth it, I mean, I don't have a problem listening to it, but I think this is more of a, you know, mayor is the one who handles these kind of issues and look for the cost savings that can bring forth to us. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Luciano.
May I ask a question of the sponsor?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm looking at your client list, and they say that Verden County, Minnesota, and S.A. County, the Verden County, is that a modern municipality?
Yes. Yeah, they do. They handle school districts. There is a transit authority in there.
All right. I also see the Verden County, is that not a municipality?
Yes. And I would add that, and they do have experience with county and city government, because being in New Jersey, they have a similar, there are a lot of similarities between there and Rhode Island, so I think that that's...
There being no other discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilor Mignolet?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stiches?
Yes.
Councilman Navarro?
Yes.
Councilor McLeod?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Pelletier?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We're on the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Council President. First, Ordinance 12-11-1, Ordinance Amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of City Cranston 205 entitled zoning, 860 Reservoir Avenue, Zone Change. This was denied out of committee, Council President, with unanimously four no's and zero yeses.
Okay, before I entertain a motion, I'm going to call on Solicitor Gingrich, I'm sorry. Quinlan?
Is this, is it on now? Okay. You know, we've reviewed this, and this matter must come to before the full council. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Dodd's opinion. The committee cannot act in place of the council under state law. State law takes precedence over council rules. I did provide each member of the council with a copy of a legal opinion. I researched on this, and the Solicitor's Office has brought Mr., is it Marcello? Marcello tonight, who is the zoning solicitor for the city, and I think, you know, he's reviewed the memo too, and with the Council President's permission, I have him address it also.
Yes. Please do.
The, we did receive the memo from Mr. Quinlan's office, and we, I also independently reviewed it, and...
Can you speak up? I can be...
Oh, I'm sorry. And our office also independently reviewed both Mr. Quinlan's memo and did some independent research, and we concur with that opinion that the vote does have to go before the entire council.
With that being said, the sponsor has asked for a continuance.
Motion to continue.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion. And actually, that would be a, the motion should be a continuance to March 26th.
Motion to continue the March 26 meeting.
Under this question?
And, second, okay. Councilman Santa Maria.
Through the chair, can I ask Pat? Hypothetically, then, why would any zoning board issues come before the committee? It would be basically a waste of our time to hear all this testimony and then find out it has to go to the council anyway. Am I right to say that all zoning matters should not come before committees anymore?
I think the committee has a right to bring it before the committee and to take testimony, but ultimately, it still is required by state law to come to the full council, so if...
So what I'm saying is, we can do that at the council meeting, then?
Yes, you could.
There's really no reason to have a committee meeting, have the people come out, listen to testimony, have us vote it down, and then we have to vote again. I mean, and if five people voted, five people voted in committee to deny it, so that's already a, that's already a majority of the council.
It's...
I'm asking this not just for the Wendy's issue, but for future issues.
Right.
Any zoning matter that comes before us, is it a waste of our time to have it come before the committee?
The answer, you don't need the lawyer to answer the question. The question really is, it gives, the answer to the question is, it gives the public another opportunity, gives the public an opportunity to be heard. They can't, may not always be able to make a council meeting. We may have a very big agenda on that particular case, and it's no different, in my opinion, it's no different than the meetings about the budget for the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee cannot approve the budget.
Point of order.
It has to go to the full council.
Point of order.
What's your point of order, Councilman?
My point of order is, under discussion, if you are going to talk on the subject matter, you need to give up the gavel.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder.
Can I just, and I kind of agree with you, but basically, we need an answer to that question generally for the future.
I think generally for the future, if it is an application from someone, as in the case in this particular ordinance, where developers are proposing something, they are entitled to a vote at the full council. Whether or not it makes sense to also have a committee meeting is really up to the wisdom of the council, for whatever reason, but ultimately, under state law, the committee, no matter how many members are on it, cannot take the place of the full council in order to comply with the state law requirement that the council hear and decide. If the state law had said the committee, the council or a committee thereof, it would be different, but I think it's pretty unequivocal in the statute that it has to be the full council.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Navarro.
I'm going to be voting against the continuance. You know, something's, I don't agree with the opinion of the fact that it hasn't gone before the full council. You know, we're saying the entire council. I know that at the committee meeting, there was five members of the city council that voted against it. There was all the neighbors and all the people that were being affected by it were here, and they gave testimony, as well as experts for the applicant.
Point of clarification, Councilman, there were four members that voted.
There was, there was five. There was Councilman Donahue, Councilman Donahue, Councilman Arquette, myself, Councilman Stiches, and Councilman Pelletier. That's five.
Well, your minutes are wrong. It was five of them.
Well, then the minutes need to, we need to go back to and fix the minutes of that meeting, because there was five. That's a majority of the council. So I think that we can argue the fact that it has gone before a majority of the council. I've already said, we don't want that zoning change to take place that's going to affect that neighborhood, and it was pretty loud and clear. That was five members of the city council, and two of them were there. That's one thing. The other thing, too, that I don't understand is, we've had a zoning change prior to this that was denied in ordinance committee, and now all of, and all of a sudden, that one never went to the full council. It got reported out, and that person, and that applicant, it just, the motion never went, I mean, the zoning change was denied, and now, all of a sudden, this application gets to come before the full council for a vote where that wasn't done in the past. So I need to, I need an answer for that question, how we have applicants that have been denied and haven't had to come before the full council again to rehash something that was denied in committee.
I will answer that, because it's been one applicant I'm aware of in the 10 years I've been with the councils had that circumstance, and in that circumstance, he never asked to come before the council. So his petition has never been denied by the council. A recommendation of denial came from the committee, and you can't translate a committee majority into a council majority. It's just, it's not permissible.
I think that's, and it's, again, it's debatable, it's your opinion, just like Mr. Attorney...
It's my opinion, it's Mr. Marcello's opinion, it's Mr. Kirshenbaum's opinion.
And those opinions, until, again, you know, what constitutes the full council? Because, I mean, what's the sense of, or I should say, a majority of the council when we have a committee meeting, having experts there, and then it gets denied, and now it's got to be heard again in front of, in front of two more, one more or two more additional members, because we had seven there that night?
Because the statute does not say the majority of the council. The statute says the city council. The city council is not a committee. The committee cannot be the city council.
Now, what says that?
The statute that Mr. Dodd cited, I believe it's 452551.
It says the council? I mean, what does the statute say?
It says the city or town council. It was in the memorandum that I sent to you.
Now, can you read the statute, please?
Well, I don't have the statute right here right now, but...
Well, I would like to know exactly.
452451 is the citation. I can pull it up and read it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, because I'm voting against continuing this. The neighbors spoke against it. I mean, we don't want a drive-through going in there, and I fought drive-throughs. We fought the other one on Pontiac Avenue that they were trying to put in there, traffic nightmares, and I'm going to fight, I'm not going to have a continuance so that the applicant can prepare two weeks from now, and then at a regular council meeting have to deal with experts and everything else again when it was already denied in committee. I'm not voting to continue this. I think that the committee and the majority of the council spoke loud and clear that night when they voted against the drive-through that night.
Counsel. I have the statute, if you'd like me to read it for you. Where a proposal for adoption, amendment, or repeal of a zoning ordinance or zoning map is made by the city and town planning board or commission, the requirements for study by the board may be waived, provided that a proposal by the planning board includes its findings pursuant to 452452. And here's the key language. The city or town council shall hold a public hearing within 65 days of receipt of a proposal, giving proper notice as described in the zoning statute. The city or town council shall render a decision on any proposal within 45 days after the completion of the public hearing. The provisions of this section pertaining to deadlines shall not be construed to apply to any extension consented to by the applicant. But the wording "city and town council" twice appears in the statute. It doesn't talk about a majority. It does not talk about a committee. It requires a city or town, a city or town council's vote, and if you deny a continuance, then you have denied the applicant the opportunity to make a presentation to the city council. And I think that would be in violation of 452451.
And what would happen then?
A court would order the council to hear it.
They would have to go to a superior court or something like that?
I'm not exactly sure what other remedies they'd have, but I think it would end up costing the city money to go through a process that's very clear in state law.
It'll cost us money. It'll cost them money, too.
Councilman Luciano.
Yes, I just want to say that I will not be supporting this ordinance, but I don't think that anyone on the ordinance committee has the right to take away my rights to vote. I'm going to, which I am not a member of the ordinance committee, but I am a member of the city council. I'm going to be entitled to vote.
Well, just a clarification, what's before us is a motion to continue.
Right. We need to talk about that shit that's gone on during the...
Councilman Arquette. I'm sorry, Councilman Stiches.
My hand was up.
You weren't dozing, were you?
It will be.
If I just heard you correctly, you're saying that, I mean, separate from this issue of whether the committee vote constitutes a vote of the council, setting that aside, you're saying on this motion to continue that if we've set up, the applicant has come forward and asked for a hearing, and we've had a duly noticed hearing, that if, at the last minute, the applicant stands up and asks for a continuance, that we have to give them a continuance?
I believe in the context of this matter, where they've come in and asked for a continuance so that they could present their full evidentiary hearing before the city council, denial denies them, then therefore, the right to have that hearing. I think they can come back and reapply, they can do a number of things, but I don't think that a continuance based upon, you know, the logic that the committee already heard this and already heard experts does not stand in the face of state law.
All right, but let's say we deny the, the motion now is for a continuance, and that fails for whatever reason, because somebody thinks that the committee vote is enough, or because we don't want to give a continuance and we think they should be ready to present their case tonight because they've known all along this is when it would come up. So the continuance, let's say the continuance motion fails, and then we have, we have a motion on the entire zoning change, and that, and that fails, and you're saying they would have the right to come back because we didn't give them?
No. I, no, I'm not, to clarify, when you kind of split your question down like that, if you go forward and you give them a hearing tonight and you deny the motion for a continuance, you can go forward and hold a hearing tonight. You have a right to do that. The question is whether you create a prejudice, and that's something for someone other than me or the city council to determine, whether it be a court. Did that answer your question, Councilman?
Well, create prejudice, could you?
Well, it may. I said it, I didn't say it would.
I don't understand that concept.
Well, if someone's witness were unavailable, would that be a sufficient ground to grant a continuance, whether it be a court or any public or administrative body? And that's a question of fact, and that's a question that you have to weigh whether or not the applicant has put forth good reason for continuance. That's a procedural matter.
Could I have one more question? And I don't know whether the, this is a question for the city clerk or for the solicitor, city solicitor, the council solicitor. Did we receive a request for a continuance prior to Mr. Sarkachi standing up and asking for it?
To the best of my knowledge, no. I went through my junk emails today, and I didn't see anything in there, and I received no phone calls, and I had checked my messages at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Councilman Santa Maria.
I'll yield, I think Council Vice President's spoken yet. I'll yield to him, I can speak out here.
Well, I got someone else, too, yeah, so.
Thank you, Councilman. I just want to say that, two things. I actually made a motion to continue it in committee, because I don't think the applicant or the residents had actually sat down to even discuss the situation, let alone hear what they had to say.
I'll be allowed to address that?
Let him speak.
So, that's what I suggested they continue it then, because an all-out denial basically screws the people. Because an all-out denial, they can go to court and win, and then whatever restrictions we had, or whatever plan that site plan review might have put in, is all washed. It all goes away. Superior Court will take that away and give them whatever they want. I'd rather have the public vet it out with the developer, or the area, or whatever. I'd rather have the public vetted out with the developer, or the area, or whatever, in site plan review, in zoning, have it heard. Have it heard, so people can see what's going there, and have an opinion there. It hasn't even been to that point yet. So, if we go through a denial now, the applicant could go right to court tomorrow morning, I'm sure the attorney has the paperwork ready to go, and say, "I wasn't fairly represented at the city council." Boom. And they automatically get what they want, with no restrictions.
Counselor Favickio?
Thank you, Council President. If I were to accept my colleague, Counselor Navarro's argument, we would just disband the full council and vote by committee, and we wouldn't need a full council meeting. And Counselor Stikos is always worried about due process rights, and giving proper rights. I think that we would be remiss if we didn't allow the applicant to continue their request, because they might even decide to withdraw it at some point. Similar to any action in court, if someone comes before the court on their own petition, they have a right to ask for a continuance, if they need witnesses, if they need evidence. So, I know this is a politically charged issue, and I know we need to, the residents are angry about the situation, but I think we need to be cautious, in, as Council Vice President Pelletier mentioned, we're going to trample on someone's rights. And we can't trample on an applicant's rights, just because we think that the overwhelming sentiment is against the issue itself. So, I think, I don't know how we could possibly deny them that right at this point in time, when they don't have their witnesses here. And I was not, I'm not part of the ordinance committee, and I was not able to listen to anything concerning this issue. So, I have no information upon which to make any decision at this point.
Counselor Santa Maria, make your mark.
Thank you, Council President. Mike, with all due respect, I wholeheartedly disagree with you. The most important part of this whole process is the committee meetings, not the council meetings. The committee meetings is where everything's vetted out. Counselor Naketa was a former legislator of the State House. The committee meetings were it. That's where everything came about. The city council is just a vote on what the committee's vetted, what the committee's heard. It's better to get rid of the council meetings, and keep the committee meetings. So, I wholeheartedly disagree with you. The committee meetings are much more important than what we do here tonight. We've already done our work, we've already done our homework, we've already listened to the people. The committee meetings are important. Don't go down this slope, I ask all my colleagues. The committees are most important in our democratic process. Don't start fooling around with that, please. Thank you.
Counselor Naketa?
Thank you, Council President. A couple of points, I'll make three points. First, I will public an apology. The minute said four, nothing, it was actually five, nothing, the majority of this council, as my colleague Navarro has stated.
Correction. It was a majority of that committee. They were sitting there as a committee, not as a council.
Not your interpretation, your interpretation. My first issue is, I think, the committee meetings are important, as my colleague, Richard Santa Maria, said. That's where the public comes out, gets to express themselves, the applicant gets to express themselves, and all the information is gathered, for us to make the best judgment we can. And that was done in the committee. And five members of this council judged that the applicant should be denied. That's what occurred. To say that a zone change must come to the full council, that's the interpretation of parliamentarian. But what I don't like is, what this current council is doing, and leadership, it's picking and choosing what zone chains get to come to the full council. Because there was another issue that was denied in committee, and never came to the full council. So, I would like the President and the Vice President to get together, and let's have some consistency. Because if this is how we're going to do things, that's what we need to do. Can't pick and choose the issues, and say, "Well, X was denied in ordinance committee, it's going to stay there. Y was denied, but it's going to come to the full council." I think that presents a bad, bad presentation to the general public, and if I'm out there, I'm going to question the leadership of this council. Second, I'd like to say that, from hearing from the parliamentarian, is legal skullduggery, and he sounds like a Philadelphia lawyer. He just feels that, you know, he's going to interpret the way he wants to interpret. We had many, many constituents come out that evening, and expressed their dissatisfaction with the applicant, with the plan, and the committee voted, five in the negative, Republicans and Democrats, all voted together to deny it. And now, we're hearing a motion to continue. Why? Why? There's got to be some underlying, or subliminal event transpiring, in order to have a motion to continue. I'm going to be voting against that motion to continue. I think we need to be above board, I think we need to be transparent, I think we need for the people to really see government at its best here.
Before I continue the discussion, a couple of points of clarification.
The gavel?
The prior, no, this is clarification, sir. Couple of points that you made, that are erroneous. In a prior denial, the applicant did not seek to be heard by the full council, was it? Whatever terms or adjective you use, they did not seek that. That's number one. Number two, the, there is another issue that went on during the presentation at the committee level. The applicant, and, again, we represent the people that are here, that are cheering, and we also represent the property owner in that area. The applicant was not allowed to give a full presentation. He was only given four minutes to present. I think that we would be hard-pressed to deny this, and not have any prejudice against the council, if it were to go to another level. That being said, there was someone here that had a comment, Counselor Stikos?
I have another question for a solicitor. We heard what I would regard as a rather radical scenario presented by Counselor Pelletier, that if the council were to vote down, vote against this continuance, that the Superior Court could step into the process, and negate the site plan review, and all other city procedures that building projects have to go through. I just wonder if there's any validity to that claim?
The risk that the city runs, whenever something does get appealed to the Superior Court, based upon a procedural defect, or some other defect, is that whatever court remedy, the court decides to set forth, does not, or may not have, the type of limitations that can be obtained from a developer during a committee process, or a site plan review process. Many times during the development process, the developers do come in with lighting concepts, parking concepts, planting concepts, which, you know, which make a development more amenable to neighborhoods. If something is denied, and goes up to Superior Court, and then the Superior Court reverses either the zoning board or council decision, when it comes back down, it does not have, and will not have, many of those, what I would call minimizations, or, you know, concessions from a developer, that aren't legally necessary, but however, do occur during the site plan review process, or council process, or zoning process.
That's not my question. My question isn't, the question that you answered was, if there's a deal available now, and it goes to court, are we guaranteed to at least have that deal? And obviously, the answer to that is no. But the question, the statement that Mr. Pelletier made, was that if it went to court, the court could decide that there wouldn't be a site plan review process. And I want to know if that's...
No, that I disagree with. In other words, if there was a procedural defect, the court could mandate that the matter be heard by the council. I believe there's, on this matter, there has already been some type of site plan review. But the court would mandate the process come back, and the court would mandate the process occur, because there would have to be certain site plan reviews, or other type of reviews as a matter of course.
So, the court doesn't have the power to throw out site plan review, because the city council made some...
Again, yes, site plan review is just a conglomeration of the fire department, the police department, the traffic engineer. It's all other municipal and state ordinances, that kind of come together to make a project, you know, run smoothly.
Thank you.
Okay, make your comments brief, because I've gone beyond this situation. We're really supposed to be debating the merits of the continuance, and I've allowed some discussion, so try to make your comments brief from here on.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that I want to clarify here. Number one, one of my colleagues has mentioned that it was a vote, they wanted to continue it, to get the neighbors and the applicant together. You know, I don't want it to make it seem here, like the neighbors, neighbors are willing to have a restaurant, they're willing to have anything there. The one thing is that the applicant is going for a C4, which includes a drive-through. You can have that either as C3, which you can have restaurant, without drive-through. C4 specifically for a drive-through. So, I don't know, I don't want it to think that the neighbors want to get together, Wendy's wants a drive-through. That restaurant wants a drive-through. We know what a drive-through will do to that neighborhood. So, it's not a matter of the applicant saying, "Well, yeah, we're going to still build a Wendy's without a drive-through." I don't think that's going to happen. So, the thing is, the neighbors want that space to be taken, it could be a restaurant, it could be a lot of host of other things, it could be, it's just that a drive-through would be detrimental, you know, in that neighborhood. Shirley Boulevard, Auburn, that's the problem that we're having here. So, the C4 designation, including a drive-through, is the problem here.
All right, you, one more time.
Thank you, Council President. Counselor Navarro, I agree with you wholeheartedly, believe me. I've always been a stickler for protecting the residents in the neighborhood, always been that way. And I do want to protect the neighborhood, but I would rather see the people sit down with the developer, maybe the developer can come up with a plan, that will help, or make the neighborhood better. I don't necessarily agree with a drive-through either. I don't necessarily agree with the trash that's going to get generated. I don't necessarily agree with the lighting, and all the other problems that might come with it. But they haven't sat down with the developer, to see if there's some other change of plan that they could come up with. That's all I'm saying. I just want to see some sort of change of plan, that the residents can be happy with, and the developer can be happy with. Because if we don't, that's where the problem's going to be. Because that's where they can go to court, and say, "Okay, well, now we want the C4," and they're going to get it. Not so much whatever the site plan review, and that's Counselor Stikos, I kind of, I know what you were trying to allude to, but I wasn't meaning it washes the all of site plan review. It just takes away some of the concessions that were negotiated by the committee, or the site plan.
Counselor Favickio?
Thank you, Council President, I'll be brief. I just want to remind Counselor Stikos, and the council, we had a somewhat similar situation in my district, where we had a zone change issue, and we enacted a couple of restrictions that run with the land, which bind the applicant forever, basically. So, I think that's partially what Mr. Marcelo was alluding to, that something like that, that was negotiated, and then became law, basically, with regard to that parcel, could happen. And that would not be available, probably, if it did get to Superior Court.
Council Vice President, I'll just, I'll stay here, I'll just summarily pass the gavel to you, I have a comment. As I've told residents...
What's the purpose of passing the gavel? Point of order.
He has a gavel, may I be recognized?
Pass, Council Presidents have...
This is not kindergarten, Counselor, this is not kindergarten, Counselor.
No, it's not.
Navarro.
All past Presidents have...
Point of order, Navarro.
No, point of order, see, I'm going to talk to the subject, he has to step down.
Counsel President has a floor.
That's the rules, he needs to step down. Point of order. If not, vote on that right now, that he's out of order. If he's going to speak on the matter, he has to come down on the floor, like every other council member.
Council President, I think previous Presidents did the same, so...
Council President LaFina. As I've said at prior meetings, not only on this issue, but on many others, sometimes it's a case of the neighbors getting together, and hearing the full proposal. I don't think that was allowed in this case. Everyone that got up before us said something about a drive-through. But the applicant never mentioned drive-through in the presentation. The continuance would be an opportunity to air your concerns. I want to remind you that your attorney represented Domestic Bank, when it was Domestic Bank, in their application for a drive-through, and for their parking issues. And the Domestic Bank has a drive-through, and it's now called Admiral's Bank, and it's moving out. So, you're going to get a drive-through on one side or the other. So, I think it would behoove you to meet with them, and have a... It would behoove you to meet with them, and have your say about what your concerns are. You've made your concerns, but I don't think they've been given the opportunity to present what they might have as alternatives. And the council, the council...
At my table, and told you to talk to the side. You don't know the whole story.
The council, the council has the ability to bring forward your concerns, and if a proposal is approved by the council, with stipulations, they hold true. If the applicant, or any applicant on any of these zoning issues, because we have, you were there, when the planner told us that we have another 800 coming up. Another 800 that are deemed to have to come before zoning changes. We've got 798 to go. If we can get the restrictions that you would like to see, with an approval, you've got a better shot, and I think this is what the Council Vice President was alluding to, than for the applicant to go to the courts, and the courts only hear the merits on the zoning alone. They don't care if there's going to be noise, as long as the applicant can prove that this, they're going to diminish the noise. They don't have to have restrictions on lighting, as long as the lighting meets current standards. So, think about this, and I understand, it's been empty for a few years, but it was a restaurant. It had a 24-hour license at one time.
No, it didn't.
I've had breakfast there at 4:00 in the morning, it had a 24-hour license. Maybe they were open illegally, but they had a 24-hour license, so. I'm not going to argue with you on that, but I really think that if you were given the opportunity, again, to meet, because I remember several instances during the presentation, or the allegations from the neighbors saying about the traffic going on to Auburn Street, but the proposal, or the outline that I saw, shows no traffic going to Auburn Street, that that opening is blocked off.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
The proposal, the...
I'm going down the corner.
The proposal before...
The city council.
Sir, I've got, sir, I've got... The proposal before the council does not show an exit onto Auburn Street.
If you were there at 4:00 in the morning, you would have seen that on Auburn Street.
It shows, I'm only judging it by what's before us, what I've seen on the proposals. It shows all traffic entering and exiting from Reservoir. So there's a lot of misconception already. I think I would rather have my say and talk to the developer, so I will be supporting the continuance. The motion before us continues to March 26th with a clerk. Please take the roll.
Pass the channel?
Yes.
Pass the Stikos?
No.
Pass Navarro?
No.
Pass Navarro?
No.
Pass Fivickio?
Yes.
Pass President Pelletier?
Yes.
Yes. Taibou. Taibou. Okay. At this point...
Point of clarification, just motion fails? Can you, is it...
The motion on the continuance fails...
Well, the one presiding on the meeting should say that, so...
The motion on the continuance fails. Mr. Chakovsky, do you plan to present this evening?
Mr. President, no, I'm not prepared. As I stated before, my client is out of state, and my expert, along with the neighbor's expert, are both testifying in Warren. As I stated earlier, our request is 60-90 day continuance. And respectfully, I've sat there quietly and listened to this, but if, for those of the council people who were not here, I was only given four minutes to speak. And I do not believe I, my client's rights were properly vetted before the council. I wholeheartedly agree with the three independent solicitors. It's a very well-established case law. I don't know why everyone's so afraid of hearing it a second time. I'm entitled, and my client's entitled, to a full hearing on the merits. I respectfully, again, ask for continuance. I am not prepared to move vote, and I do not have my traffic expert with me, my planning expert, along with the neighbor's planning expert, are in Warren, and my client is out of state. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Is there a motion on the ordinance?
Well, what was the, it came out of ordinance committee with the recommendation, it was a denial, correct? I mean, how does it, that's the way the council rules, right? Came out, and we can state...
State law will prevail over the council rules, so, you know, to enable to have a decision, you either have to conduct a hearing or you have to take a vote on denial.
I make a motion to deny.
There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? They may not, please take the roll. I'm sorry. Councilman Stikos?
I'd just like to ask Mr. Sarkachi a couple of questions. If I might, through the chair.
Well, he already told us he's not ready to present, but if you have a couple of brief questions, sure. If he'll be able to answer them, sure.
Would you like to be...
Through the chair, however.
Would you like me to be sworn in?
It's really not my call.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary.
Look, could you swear in, Mr. Chakovsky?
Do you want me to? I don't know. It's not necessary. I don't know what the hell's going on.
Do you promise to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay. It's good enough for me. Go ahead, Mr. Stikos.
I'd like to know when you learned that your expert witness would not be present tonight?
Friday afternoon.
And when did you learn that the property owner would not be able to be present?
Thursday afternoon.
And did you notify anyone from the council prior to this evening that you wanted to continue this hearing?
I notified the solicitor, Pat Quinlan.
And when did you do that?
I think we spoke, was it Friday, Pat?
Friday afternoon.
Friday afternoon. Thank you. Actually, I called you in the morning, and you called me back in the afternoon. That's when we spoke. I left you a voicemail in the morning.
Exactly.
Well, there's been a motion made to deny. Do you have any other comments you wish to make on this application?
No, I will just say that if I'm denied, I will seek redress through the court system, and I will ask for attorney's fees. Because I believe it's improper to deny me and my client the right for a full hearing on the merits. There is clear state law and case law that says no committee can take action that binds a council. Full council has to act on this. But I will, you know, you're a free acting body. You guys can do whatever you want, but I have the right, and my client has the right to go to Superior Court, and I will tell you respectfully that we will. And there is a lot of, I listened to all the, you know, I got up, I did the, Councilman Aketo gave me four minutes, and I listened to all the neighbors' testimony. 75% to 85% of it was false. I have asked Attorney Dodd on two separate occasions, and by the way, I gave him a copy of the site plan that showed there's, you know, Attorney Dodd has a copy, there's no entrance on the side street, Auburn. I asked to sit down and meet with these neighbors. I asked to address their concerns. I asked, I could work this out. I could mitigate 75%, 85% of their concerns regarding lightage, hours of operation, noise. I could work on all of these issues. I can reposition the drive-through. I can do a lot of things. I could build a wall. I could have a buffer zone. But I was never given that opportunity, never by the ordinance committee or never by this council. I was never given an opportunity to present traffic testimony or to show or to explain the, all the other drive-throughs on Reservoir Avenue. So I respect the council. I like almost all of you, because I know almost all of you. Almost was the word. But the reality is, you, for some reason, when I say you collectively as a council...
Would you say that's a majority?
I'm under oath to tell the truth, and I will tell you that. My mother taught me, if you can't say something nice about, don't say anything. So I'll decline to answer that question. But I was never given the opportunity. And we're talking about a Wendy's with or without a drive-through, with mitigations. Why are you afraid to hear it? Why are you afraid, all of you, I mean this respectfully, I'm talking to Councilman Stikos, but I mean this to all of you. Why are you afraid to hear the case? What's so bad about having a hearing?
Council President, can I ask a quick question?
No. Councilman Stikos still has the floor. You said you'd make a brief.
Right. And I'd just like to say, I'm not afraid to hear it, and I'm here tonight to listen to it. And the only thing that's standing in the way of us hearing it is you.
To the chair, may I ask you a question, Joe? The night of the committee meeting?
Yes.
Were you prepared? Did you have all your people here the night of committee meeting?
Yes.
Well, God, why didn't you have them come up then?
Because Councilman Aketo gave me four minutes.
He gave you four minutes. He didn't give everyone else four minutes. You weren't prepared. You said, you got up and you said, "I want to work with the neighbors."
Yes.
Then they got up, and you never came back up and said anything else after that.
I asked to come back after.
I didn't know you had all your brain trust in the audience.
I did, and I...
They didn't come before us?
Ask the question, Councilman.
All right. You had the people here with you the other night.
I had my traffic expert, my planning expert, my site engineer, and the owner and the applicant.
Why didn't they speak?
We were waiting for, well, typically, you put them on and you ask questions. I was not given that opportunity. I was given four minutes. I was, my testimony or my presentation was limited to four minutes.
I'm still a little lost because I'm getting the impression you weren't prepared.
I was very prepared. I just wasn't given an opportunity to speak.
But they didn't come up and speak. We might have had a different lively experiment, so to say, between everybody. But you didn't, they just sat there?
Well, we were hoping for an opportunity. At the end of that presentation, I got up to speak to address some of the neighbors' concern, and my memory was that Councilman Aketo said, "You had your four minutes, you were done."
You had your four minutes, but the other guys didn't have their four minutes.
Well, when you present somebody, you put them under oath, and you ask them questions. And that's typically how I do a zoning presentation. Okay.
Councilman Navarro, can you brief?
Thank you. Yeah, just, and real brief. Attorney Sarkachi, at the end of that meeting, the city clerk, as well as our counsel lawyer, said that under state law, it requires a hearing at the full council, which we debated. And that, so you were well aware that this was going to be heard at the full council. And we even let the neighbors, because we weren't aware, you know, they were saying about state law, about the rights of the applicant and all this, and we were very, I guess we acted cautiously, and we said, "All the neighbors will be here," because we wanted to have no surprises. So the applicant, and yourself knew, and you should have been prepared to be here tonight, because all of a sudden now, you know, there's going to be a continuance, and we're putting off the neighbors again to whenever date certain, and it just seems like something's going on here, when you full well know, and I don't know if you advise your client, that how important if this project was going to be, that they should have been here for this presentation tonight if it was going to happen.
May I respond, Mr. President?
You're right.
Mr. Navarro, with all due respect, I take umbrage to that, because you keep saying there's something sneaky or sinister going on here. I have been nothing but above board and totally transparent. I called Attorney Dodd today. Called Attorney Dodd before I filed the application. I've been very upfront. I've been very transparent. I've explained everything. There's nothing sneaky going on here. You may not like the fact that I have to come back and these neighbors have to come here, and I'm sorry for that. I'm sorry that they call you. I'm sorry you're the councilman for the area. I understand all that. I understand politics. I get it. But the reality is, my client has a right. Now, you have every right to vote. You can vote to deny this tonight, and that's certainly your prerogative. But I have, my client has rights, and I plan to exercise them. Please, don't imply that I'm doing something improper, illegal, and moral or wrong, because that's not how I am. I don't live my life that way. I don't practice law that way. We may disagree on this issue, whether, you know, the Holy Grail, the drive-through's going to destroy the neighborhood or not, and I can respect your position, I can respect their position. But I have never in my life done anything sinister or underhanded, and I take umbrage with that.
Councilman Aketo.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of questions. First of all, wasn't there a presentation in front of the planning board?
No.
There was no pleasant presentation in front of the...
It was a very limited question presented to the planning board. Mr. Pimento spoke very briefly. He submitted a report prior to that. The question before the planning board, was the zoning request that we made, the applicants made, consistent with the City of Cranston Comprehensive Use Plan? The answer came down unanimously, yes. And that was the only thing presented. There was no site plan, there were no boards, there was no traffic experts, there was nothing else. Testimony was limited to that ordinance, when I say the proposed zone change, it wasn't consistent with the comprehensive plan.
And it came to my knowledge this evening that you said on the evening that that ordinance was heard, that ordinance was heard in the ordinance committee, that your staff was here, and they were not encouraged to speak. Is that your position?
I'm sorry?
They were not encouraged to speak. Is that your position?
I was not allowed to question them after I had given my four minutes.
Okay. Just through the chair, please. When we are in subcommittee and we hear a resolution or statute or ordinance, anyone in that audience can sign the roster and speak on the issue for four minutes. That's their prerogative to do so. You know, I can't lead people by the hand and say, "You have to offer anything." If you had an issue, if you were going to make a presentation, the responsibility was on your shoulders to get your staff to that podium and make their presentation.